People think that's Christmas, but it's football season. Arguably, most of them.
Okay, we are here for the Court Services Advisory Report Regular Meeting Agenda. Today is Thursday, September eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Call this meeting to order and we will start with the roll call.
Ryan Wood.
Judge Stoner.
Kent Bridge.
Jim Anderson for Tommy Johnson III.
Butch Spring.
Vicky Behenna.
And Bridget Biffle. Um, notice that this meeting was properly posted on September tenth, two thousand twenty-five. First on the agenda, we have discussion on possible action regarding the minutes from July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Anyone has a motion?
Move those seven minutes.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Got it.
All opposed?
I'm going to stay.
Okay. And then number two, we have discussion and possible action regarding a statistical report from Team. Question by the board. Amy Stacey or Chris are here to present.
Stacy.
Hey.
Hi. I will send you some.
I think you're all.
Yeah. Oh, one more chance. Oh, they're coming tomorrow.
All right. Um, as you can see, we screened six hundred and eighty people, um, in the month of August. We requested thirty-five O R bonds from the screening. We made sixty-seven conditional bond recommendations. And in total, we served seven hundred and ninety-four people in August. That number includes people who were previously approved prior to the month of August. So that's why that number is higher than individual screen for that month. Oh. Um, our total court dates were three hundred and ninety. Those were scheduled court dates. And we had seventy-three failures to appear, resulting in a court appearance rate of nineteen percent. And I just want to be clear of how that's calculated. We calculate that based on the total number of scheduled court dates for that month. So, um, we don't calculate that based on the number of participants served within that month. Because not everyone who has served within that month has a court date in that month. Um, if we were to do that, that failure to appear number would be much lower and not really representative of the schedule of court dates.
So nineteen percent, so if you had a hundred people scheduled for court appearance, only nineteen of you showed up, is that what you're telling me?
No, nineteen didn't.
So, okay, so that's a negative type number then.
Yes, so I'm sorry, I said failures to appear and my wording here is court appearance. That is my mistake, oh my goodness. So I apologize because sometimes we say F T A, usually in the quarterly report, we say F T A.
Right.
Out of minds.
Okay.
So eighty-one percent.
I like that.
Court appearance rate, my bad. Please, yeah, eighty-one percent.
And so total individual screen, six hundred and eighty, and then the O R release recommendations, that is just specifically O Rs without conditions, correct?
Correct.
And then conditional release, those are people with conditions, and sixty-seven of those were made?
Yes.
Do we know why, so that's around a hundred out of the six eighty, so most of the individual screen, that seems like a lot of individuals. The recommendations aren't getting as most of it because of history and those types of things.
Yes, so, um, we have the, 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 the charges this board doesn't want us to even look at. So part of, we screen those people out. But then if there is extensive history of F T A, failure to appear, extensive violent history, um, we also screen those people out. Um, we interview only those that the, the D A's reviewed and that we think is appropriate.
Is this the first month that the public safety assessment is being used?
Yes.
Are you seeing that affect a number of recommendations in your opinion? Or are you able to even tell yet since it was just implemented mid-bond?
I think it's probably too early to tell, but you'll notice from the last time we were here, I think last time we had one O R recommendation. We did have more O R recommendations this time than we ever had before since we've been doing this. But I think it's too early, I think that we need a few months to really determine that.
Does anybody have any questions about any of this?
That we need to move to approve this with corrections.
Second.
And so a motion was made to correct this report, um, on the court appearance rate.
Eighty-one instead of nineteen, that's correct.
Yeah, I'm happy to correct that.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that will carry. And then we also have number three, discussion on possible action regarding a report from the D A's office for pre-trial G P S monitoring.
And you do have this piece of paper that she pre-cast out in front of you, with the number three in the corner.
Okay, so obviously what I do is completely different than Team. I want to make sure that everybody knows that's clear. The people that I have, I don't send them to go get services and stuff unless they ask, and that's done through an independent company. Um, I currently have thirty-four participants on leg. Four of those are females, thirties are males. I have seven active units, twenty-seven passive units, and eleven people waiting to post bond.
Excuse me, what, what's your difference between an active unit and a passive unit?
Download speeds.
The what?
Download speeds.
Can I explain that for you?
Yeah. Okay, I got it.
So, an active unit and a passive unit is literally determined based on the download speed. An active unit will download, um, approximately every two hours, whereas a passive is every six to eight hours. Unless you put it in a download speed mode. I can put it in a pursuit mode and it's every thirty seconds. If they do anything that they're not supposed to do, any zones, any violations, it's an immediate notification whether it's active or passive.
I ought to assume then, based upon my definition, that your active is a more expensive system?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. And my, my individuals that are on G P S that pay for their own units, with the exception of the seven that I have that are on indigent. And that is ordered by a judge, I don't make that determination. Twenty-seven of my people are on bond with the bondsman. They are required to post whatever the bond is, is set for the judge. They are released from the jail to one of my, uh, one of Ms. Behenna's investigators, and then they're transported to me. Um, I've had one failure to appear since July. And actually, I can go back to last year when I started, I've had one failure to appear total since I've been with the D A's office. Um, three of them since July have been returned to custody for a failure to comply. And that could be anything from violations on the monitor to just not checking in. It's up to the judge to make those determinations, I don't ask for the ones. And fees collected since July first was eleven thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars and one penny.
This collected from the participant?
Yes.
I think the, oh.
What is, what is your rate, you're kind of curious.
Um, the rates were set up years and years ago and I've never changed them. Um, a passive unit is six dollars a day and an active unit is twelve dollars a day. And the individual is notified prior to, um, being put on the unit, how much it costs?
I think Commissioner was asking where the funds go, eleven thousand.
Um, that goes into the revenue fund, though it's twelve sixty, I think.
When they were talking about how we were missing all those funds, is that in the same account as before when we were talking about the forty thousand, maybe the longer?
I, I don't know, because there are so many funds the county has. I just know that this was an issue last year. We got together with Jessica and figured out that those funds are going back in. G P S monitoring funds.
Is that the one of those where they were, you know, with the forty thousand we were going to miss by waiving? It was the controversy.
Don't recall that.
Because, you know, it was a net revenue loss when we were talking about the total cost of the outsourcing of contract. And that was part of it that, uh, we identified was the waiving of some, of some fees. I'm not sure if they were taken entirely or if it was just from ankle bracelets or whatever, but there was a fee loss of forty thousand.
Yes.
That was part of the goose egg.
The G P S monitoring.
So if we're collecting eleven, does it go back into that where we were used to getting some?
That, that's my understanding, but Commissioner, I don't want to represent for sure.
Okay. She will.
Now, prior to that, for the last year, the, the revenue for it up to July first was a little over thirty-eight thousand. So I'm only going from July first to next.
Okay.
So when we have people say seven are indigent, when we have that, technically, they would be paying fees, like how is that covered since? Is that kind of the issue that, I know we've talked about that before, is, is that the issue is there is no indigent funds or?
What I tell the attorneys when they come to me and ask about indigent fund, because I, my, my understanding is no indigent funds. I tell them that they have to get permission from Ms. Behenna, because that's going to be on per case. So what has happened just, uh, and I don't think the contract changed, this county has the contract with the company that, um, provides the service. And it's my understanding the county's been paying that. I don't know how to what fund and where it's coming from, that's my understanding.
Now, some of those that are indigent on here have been indigent for more than three years. Because it was done prior to the program resolving.
But they're still in a program for three years?
I've had someone as long as a little over five years. Just depends on the type of case and, I mean.
The eleven people waiting to post bond, are those people that would otherwise be out, but in a lack of available bracelet? Were they are someone who, when the judge set the bond, said if you make bond, you have to?
It's once the judge has said this is going to be your bond and if you post that bond, you have to wait.
Okay, so those aren't necessarily people that wait, because some, a lot of those people are never going to get out, okay?
Right, and these are people that had extraordinarily high bonds and their attorneys have argued that.
Yes, ma'am.
Those there way you would be able to break down for us if we wanted in the future, how long, like anybody over one year, two years, thirty years?
Yeah, absolutely.
Anybody interested in including that information or do we just care about the number? Do we want to see how long people are staying on?
Well, I, I, let me just say, I, I probably will object to the detailed information because there's a variety of reasons why somebody would be on a G P S monitoring device for a number of years. I'm not certain, you know, that needs to be public.
Anybody have any other questions about this report?
So someone who has been on a G P S device, they could have already been ordered by a judge to wear a G P S device. I got you, so that's part of their.
That's part of their bond. If you get, if you get out on a bond, you're going to have to have a G P S monitor.
But if you get out on a bond, you're still awaiting some sort of adjudication on your page, right?
Yes, this is all pre-trial.
Okay, this is, yeah.
Um, I only take people that have been ordered to do it by a judge. I don't make any decisions or determinations on putting a G P S on it.
Okay.
I'll move to accept the report. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the report will be accepted. And then we have number four, discussion on possible actions regarding the dates and times of the two thousand twenty-six scheduled meetings. I know last time we had talked about moving that to eleven A M. I think that accommodated a lot of the schedules and allowed, uh, the undershare to be here. And Mr. Bridge, did you check on if you would be able to make that happen?
Um.
But I'll just.
Yeah, it's, I took a juvenile conflict docket that meets every Monday and Thursday. Um, I don't, I can't always guarantee that, that I could be here at eleven, though. I split that docket with my partner and I, I could be here.
Would be the same thing on Thursday afternoons.
Yeah, I mean, it, it would be less bad as the day goes on, but, but I mean, I can make it work to the extent that I'm happy to.
And I do also want to point out that when we, it's always the same Thursday every month. Whereas before, it was.
I just appreciate an item on here that I can fully understand.
I'll move to approve. You give a motion for that?
Yes, and then do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of accepting those dates, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That will be approved. And then we will go to citizen participation. It looks, we have three of those, um, first up is Carol Knight.
Good afternoon. Some of you know me, some don't, my name is Carol Knight. So I talk to people in the jail every day, I talk to people in court. Um, I do, I'm, I'm really into statistical stuff, who did what to who. I've been asking for open records from Team for a year now. And it's been ignored over and over. So first, um, Mr. Steele, I want to give that to you first. So I'm asking again for the names and the case numbers of participants from Team. We want to go through and check them, see who's going to Team and if there's bail in court here. I understand the idea of giving credit for all the court dates, but Ms. Behenna, if I, as a bondsman, if I say to you, I posted a hundred thousand dollar bond. And my client made nine of the ten required court appearances, do I get credit for those nine? And I only have to pay the court ten thousand instead of a hundred thousand, would you let me do that? Probably not.
Are, are you asking me a question? I thought this was your.
Okay, so the, the answer would be no. The court clerk's not going to get me, give me credit for how many times I got my clients' court. You're paying a hundred thousand dollar bond, you posted a hundred thousand dollar bond, we're not giving you ninety percent off because you go on court ninety percent of the time. I think the Teams, uh, they think I'm misinterpreting their numbers, but the reality is you have this many clients and this many fail to appear. That's your failure to appear rate. I mean, it's easy math. But we looked at, since we can't get their records, what we can get are the warrants issued records. We dig through the warrants issued records, and we take, and in this case, we took the, um, just so we can see it. We took the fourth quarter, we finally got through that. We took the warrants issued list, and we go through every warrant issued, there's a lot warrants issued. So we go through that, we find all the Team releases, the Team warrant, and we look at those. Now, Team reports that they had a hundred and ninety-three and that failed to appear in court. So we dig through and we find the hundred and ninety-three that failed to appear in court. And we look at just those hundred and ninety-three people. We want to know everything about them, everything now. And what we found, seventy percent of them were convicted felonies. Sixty-eight percent made zero court appearance, lived between release and failure to appear. You give them a release and they just stay off, sixty-eight percent. Sixty-five percent of those releases were signed by a Team employee, not the defendant. How do you even know that they knew about the court? If they didn't sign it? Seventy-two percent of the releases were signed by one judge. Judge Tron signed seventy-two percent of the releases failed to appear in the fourth quarter. One of these didn't even have a judge's signature. And it was processed, I get the copy of it. We looked at them and we found twenty-six of them had committed other crimes while on Team. Fifty-eight currently have warrants. Eighty-four entered a plea after being arrested in Malibu. Those eighty-four people totaled four thousand four hundred and eighty days in the county jail. Your daily incarceration rate is sixty-six dollars and forty-nine cents. That's two hundred ninety-seven thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars and twenty cents from the fourth quarter. That the county put out under, under your own numbers. Three are currently still in custody. I have copies of this, if anybody wants another copy. I want you also to know that when we look at them, I found, I found ten people on drug trafficking cases out on, on Team. Pental, meth. We found cultivating C D S. Eluding, endangering, while eluding, B Y, possession of a firearm by convicted felon, prostitution, harboring, stealing identities, stealing anything that was nailed to the ground. Breaking into steel.
If you want to include your. Okay.
Uh, I appreciate you, Tim. If anybody wants any of this off, I'll make sure we leave it out.
And I would, I would like to just briefly address, um, Team interviews, the way the current process is. They are interviewed over a polycom, Team is not able to see them in person, so everything is signed by a Team employee. The defendant is not able to sign it because we have no mechanism, so that is why all of that paperwork is signed off by Team and those interviews are done that way.
Good afternoon.
Especially.
Okay. And then next we have, uh, Monica. Is it Gaddis or Gaddis?
Gaddis.
Yes.
Good afternoon. Larceny law change, Bill, on the Constitution, and it requires that a victim be informed, and heard, he's already released. In a rush to impede a Oklahoma County jail, is anyone asking the victims how they feel about these releases? Okay. H B, a fourteen-year-old child living from Missouri. Court record shows a victim of rape and forcible oral sodomy by a defendant who currently has an active warrant for phase two appearance. Stephanie Frogg is a victim of forged instruments. Emmanuel Hammond, victim, victimized by a burglar who took his car. Samuel Parkinson.
These victims consent to having their names written on the passport or where it's. Doing this here. I was just concerned that the victims, um, wanted their personal information or their names shared, use initials.
You write me use initials?
Yes. Okay.
This is a business, was burglarized and a stolen A T E. It was later recovered at Caesar Gale Park in an unrelated call. M H, a victim of domestic abuse, blew up. L P, a larceny of auto. J C was struck by birdshot during a reckless conduct with firearm. T A, a victim of aggravated assault and battery. J L, property was destroyed. R A, M J, D S were all residents of a nursing home and were victimized by one defendant on a crime spree to exploit the elderly. S O, identity was stolen. V C, homeless burglarized by a defendant from Arizona. P J, identity was stolen by a defendant from Arkansas. M S, a witness to a naked man streaking and masturbating in public. A H, his car was taken from him. A R, victimized by domestic abuse while a V P O was violated. Another business lost one thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars worth of their inventory to thieves. L T, a victim of auto larceny. Another business was burglarized and a release was signed with a note about active warrants in Texas. G A and another business were victims of someone stealing stolen property, selling stolen property. M M, from a business, was almost burned down to the ground by an arsonist. And R K went to the hospital for assault and battery with great bodily injury. He stopped in this, he knew crime.
What was this list? What was this list?
These are about the victims that were released. Their defendants were released on Team releases from the fourth quarter.
Okay, so these, okay, so the list, then you're trying to tie this back to Team, is that what you're trying to do?
These are the victims of the defendants that are currently in Team.
That's my question.
What's your, what's your role, maybe, are you with the Bondsman Association?
Yes.
Anybody on there, I mean, they, I take this public safety very seriously, I think we all do too, I just don't understand the argument. Anybody in there that had money for a bond, you would have gotten.
These are people that are on the failure to appear list. Okay, these people are on the run, some of them are on the run.
Okay.
What are we, are, is that?
You say some of them are. But your, your argument is that whatever your failure to appear rate is lower than their failure to appear rate and they have.
Yeah, that's the part I'm misunderstanding.
Yeah, I'm not following here at all.
So since we don't get the, uh, since we don't get all of the records, what we're doing is going through the warrants issued. People who don't go to court, there's a hundred and ninety-three on their quarterly report. We went and found those hundred and ninety-three defendants that failed to appear in court. These are the victims, these are the crimes, that will not get their day in court because they're on the run, some of them are on the run. Some of them have been arrested by the police.
What is? What's, what's the failure to appear rate? Maybe if you look at all the cases on the bond, then a comparison would be helpful, which is, your argument would say, we would do a better job if somebody had money to get us out. But you're, you guys still have, bondsmen still have people that they're not able to get to court either.
Ultimately, bail, the failure to appear rate for bail starts at ten percent. And then we see statistically that the bondsman will get, uh, get that down to four percent. And then the other remaining four percent, the bondsman either pays or finds resolution with the court in order to, uh, close the bond out.
If someone is indigent and doesn't have the ability, I mean, if you're posting a bond, you have money, so the chances are you're not homeless, you have all of those things. Is the argument for these indigent defendants who are homeless or those things, like, should they just be left in jail indefinitely because they don't have money? I guess that's the, like, where are we coming from? Because it isn't taking a bondsman business, because a lot of them are homeless or no transportation. So I guess, what is the, pre advocating just for them to always have to stay in jail or?
Uh, no, there's always a place for an O R, but it's not drug traffickers. It's not people who rape fourteen-year-olds that they picked up in Missouri.
You don't really think that people charged with active rape cases are getting out on Team bond? I assume that your list are people who failed to appear for a different crime, who committed a more serious crime.
Actually, uh, I forget to the name, what we did was we pulled the hundred and ninety-three, we pulled every release, we printed every release. Now, I didn't bring them with me, but we pulled every one of those hundred and ninety-three releases. We pulled every one of those hundred and ninety-three initial filings. Then when the ones that we found that have been rearrested or committed more crime.
Then when the ones that we found that had been rearrested or committed more crimes, we went back through and counted how many days each one of those people spent in the county jail. So, no, we did extensive research. And, and your question, bondsmen post bonds for indigent people every day. Every day. We help them out. There are places for ORs. A mom who goes and writes a bad check for groceries deserves an OR. She deserves everything of help that we can give her. But the mom who goes over to David Stanley and writes a $75,000 check that's a forged instrument should not be treated the same way as a mom who wrote a $200 check at the grocery store to buy groceries.
David Stanley takes a $75,000 check?
Yes, they do.
Really?
Yes, they do.
I know where I lie my next time.
Big issue for me is, I think a big issue for me is that we do have drug traffickers for people who commit rapes or those things that are given bond. That individuals can maybe post a $750,000 bond. I've seen people with extraordinary priors or violent priors given high bonds, and those individuals are able to get out of jail and post a bond. And some of them are violent criminals. This board has approved a list of people who can get out on team bonds, and none of those includes current charges for rape or any of those things. So the people that are getting out on team bonds aren't violent criminals. So I guess it's a question of, we're talking about, okay, if you're charged with trafficking and you have money, you can get out. If you're charged with trafficking and you're an individual who's poor, doesn't have resources, then you're required to stay in jail. So I guess my point is, when you're looking at it from that way, you absolutely can get out through a bondsman if you have money. So I guess that's the part that really bothers me. Also, I think there was something thrown out about Judge Trong signing 72%. If anybody in this room knows, now Judge Trong is only signing her own bond, so most of those were being taken to the judge they're assigned to, to find because she stepped out, even though she was a big part of pretrial release because she is the senior most criminal judge on the bench, so most of those were being taken to her screen. Uh, I know Chris Steele, I think I saw him want to say something, so Chris, I'll give you a moment.
Yeah.
Well, let's finish, if you want to finish.
Participation, and then there can be a comment. Otherwise, I'll be, I mean, we've got another meeting after this.
Um, number three is Tracy Terrell. Am I saying that right?
Terrell.
Terrell.
Marcy's law changed the Oklahoma Constitution. It requires the rights of the victim to be equal to the rights of the accused. In the rush to empty the jails, is anyone asking the victims how they feel about releases to team? AB entered her living room to find a person that she had a VPO against standing there. She was screened, she screamed, and he smashed her TV and left. LM is an EMT who was assaulted by someone while trying to do, trying to help. MH, DTRV, MA, all victims of one person's single-day crime spree of vandalism. LA had her car stolen. GG, refrigerator was stolen out of his house. GT's property was stolen. AR is a construction worker whose tools were stolen out of his work truck. 10 victims, including MB, RH, JK, BM, were all victims of a conspiracy to burglarize a storage facility. LC was assaulted and her iPhone was stolen. A Dale City police officer was assaulted for doing his job. BH, from a pool company, chased a stolen truck by GPS and called the police. SY was assaulted and battered with a dangerous weapon by an X. N and H, C, their house was broken into and vandalized. RR was assaulted with a dangerous weapon. NP walked into his home while it was being burglarized. TB was assaulted and battered with a dangerous weapon. He was beaten with a metal chair. LM was driving down the road when an unknown vehicle was stolen in her car, and then her car was rammed repeatedly by a person on a bicycle. Recycling company got lucky. A guy trying to steal the Mack truck could not get it, um, the parking brake off, and the police were able to make an arrest. Grocery store lost over $1,000 of products during a destruction of property incident. BD, a victim of domestic assault and battery in the presence of her minor child. BN was a victim of a hit-and-run driver who then stopped, was in possession of a firearm after one condition.
I want to say, though, you've contacted my office about open records. You've got my response. We don't, as per the DA's counsel, answer for other housing agencies, so county commissioners do not house these records. So I appreciate you coming to this meeting as opposed to the VOCC, really, because this is the advisory board for this contract. The VOCC created this body to oversee it, so this is a more right place for you to be heard and to get, as you're getting your feedback.
Does anybody have any questions? I will also say, I know some of those read, I know there were elements of domestic, domestic cases are not eligible for any team bond, so anybody who is on a domestic case, they do not have, they're not eligible for team, so those weren't signed off on just under the statute of any domestic cases or domestic assault.
They are. They are.
Let me, let me just say this. I think if you all would like to sit down and meet with those of us that have organized the pretrial release program, we're happy to do that and give you the list of the automatic OR bonds, to give you a list of the offenses this board has determined are not eligible for a pretrial release on a team bond, and to also talk about the statutory requirements. Remember, that pretrial release is provided for in Oklahoma statute. It's also provided for in the federal constitution. And there's been a federal judge recently, it was made a determination about a year ago, that it is a constitutional violation of the equal protection clause to keep somebody incarcerated on a low-level, nonviolent crime just because they can't post bond. So knowing all of those considerations, it was taken into advisement by those of us that worked the new pretrial release program to establish a program that provided for public safety, to provide ADAs. Up until a year ago, no ADA ever went to an initial arraignment. I call it initial appearance. You all call it the first arraignment. No ADA ever appeared there. Nobody had any facts about what the individual that was requesting release. Nobody does an NCI check on a bond. Somebody can post a bond and have an extensive criminal history. Nobody's doing an NCIC check. So I want to make sure that you all understand there are absolutely safeguards here. The DA's office does advise, or abide by Marcy's law. Victims are given notice of bond hearings, which is what Marcy's law requires, and all of that is complied with. In addition to that, now there are ADAs that review, because facts matter in a criminal case. You can't just say a charge and expect that that's the end-all, be-all. Facts matter. So ADAs are constantly reviewing the charges, the probable cause affidavit, reviewing criminal history, and failure to appear rates, and are making decisions on nonviolent offenses. Who might be eligible for a team conditional bond, where a team is watching that individual, having them go to services, having them, calling them, and making sure they know when their next court date is? It's not a perfect system. No system of pretrial release ever is. But the Oklahoma law and the federal constitution provides for pretrial release in circumstances that do not affect public safety. That's what pretrial release does, is try to evaluate public safety and who's going to appear and make informed decisions on conditional release through team. So I just want to add.
Aggravated trafficking or trafficking.
I said, we'll be happy to sit down and talk to you about the list.
I'll grab it and give you the list. And I didn't know. And we can all talk about aggravated trafficking is another one of the statutes that require a simple monitor. I have, I will say, I have heard from several victims, whether it be law enforcement or other officers, who are involved or victims of those crimes, appreciating that those individuals are getting mental health help or the ability. Team and community sentencing is very good about having job pairs and getting them jobs so they can pay back their victim and make them whole as far as restitution. So I have personally heard from some victims who appreciated that. I'll give Mr. Steele a brief.
Good, thank you.
Brief commentary.
Sure. And, and I, I concur, and actually I've reached out to Ms. Nye, offered to be personally hold the reports to say that we can expand statistically what we are reporting. I don't, I don't know the details of the information that was shared today. I would just want the counsel and, and those in attendance to be mindful that when a person who is assigned to a team bond is not compliant, or if they fail to appear in court, we have to file a, a report concerning those matters. And when the powers that be, the judges, determine that the person has lost the opportunity to remain in the team bond program, a warrant is issued for their arrest and will no longer respond at that point. That, that, that goes to law enforcement. So when a person has a warrant out for their arrest and is deemed eligible to be fit in our program, I just want to make that distinction. If a person is compliant, we report that. If a person is not compliant, we report that. We're trying to be as transparent as we possibly can be with our failure to appear, and you can go back and ever and forth and file since we have the privilege of providing these services, and our failure to appear rate fluctuates between 17 and 19% per month. We constantly, under Stacy and James' leadership, are trying to figure out how we can improve that and mitigate the barriers and, and increase the stability in those that we get to serve so that they can make report appearances. It's just as important to us as it is anyone in this room, I assure you. But I just want to make the distinction between when our services are in place and when it's turned over to a law enforcement candidate. So when a warrant is released, I can tell you at that point, if we have information, we're going to provide that information to help law enforcement, but we're not responsible if a person is no longer, if a person is removed from our, from our program.
And I just have one question for Stacy or Chris. Are a lot of these people who are coming to team, are most of them pretrial at the very beginning of their case, or are you seeing quite a few, like, later on through the case or halfway through the process, being sent to you all? Is it mostly VA pre-screening or something by the judge and later on in the case?
There are a good percentage that are later on in the case. It could be a result of a bond reduction hearing where the attorneys in court have a bond reduction hearing, and the judge decide, agrees to conditions for someone's release. So that's, that's another source. We, we use the approved charges for release and our screening process with the DA to determine who we interview for our release.
And so some of those charges that maybe this board didn't approve, they come from a judge later on in the process because the judge kind of screened out and heard that it's in court and sends them to you? Does anybody have any questions or comments or anything regarding that?
Again, my issue, not an issue, but my problem is the apples and the oranges. You know, team, I understand, takes the apples, and you're reading to me the oranges. So that's the part we're trying to separate it out. I have a difficult time doing that. And I shouldn't say this, how much do, how much does team charge for a bond? How much do you charge for a bond? How much do the bonds people charge for a bond?
10%.
Okay.
And we pay the court 100% if they fail to appear and we're not able to get them back. But team also gets, well, a million a year from the county. That's why we go to the VOCC.
Well, but they're doing a whole host of things. Just one thing, Carol, you know that.
I know.
And you also don't disclose when you come into the commission meetings, y'all are bondsman either. And you also said you didn't get a response, and you know that's not true. You got a response.
Um, no response, or we don't have records for it somewhere else.
Well, that you're going to the wrong place. We would think somebody like.
Where's the suggestion?
Well, where are the records are held? That's where I would suggest.
Anybody else, are there any board comments?
I'd kind of like to push here too. I think you bring up some important issues that need to be understood better. This is really tricky business trying to thread this needle. I mean, you're trying to thread the needle of constitutional rights, public safety, appearing in court, all this, and it's, it's difficult. But comparing apples to oranges, you have 26 committed other crimes while on team bonds. Okay. Give me a list of also, but if, if on regular bonds, how many people commit new crimes? That way we can actually compare apples to apples in a way. So I, I know people are out on bond, they commit new crimes. Things like that, just having a, a better comparison. Is it, if you're having a, if you have about a 10% failure to appear, they have 19, so we're talking about a difference of really 9%.
They're going out with court appearances for their failure to appear rate, not, we have this many people in our program and this many people fail to appear, which is how bail is implemented.
Well, I, I don't know. Mr. Freeman's comment, we're trying to do comparison, just having data associated with, this is what pretrial does, pretrial release does, but on a bondsman, we, we think we would do better because we don't have people committing new crimes. But they do, but what is that number? So you can compare what it is that's being done here, so it's, the board is trying to evaluate. I'm, I'm, you're making an argument that we're not using correctly. So I'm just trying to understand that better. It's not fair just to attack them without actually saying, if we were doing this, we would do a much better job, and what that data looks like. That's just helpful.
What we would like is for team to provide us the open records that we asked for, so we can go through and look at each defendant, what was that defendant charged with? Are they on your exclusionary list? Which, we know there are a lot of people on team releases that are being released from the jail.
That would be helpful.
Quickly after they are arrested on trafficking, and then when they fail to appear. That's the only place that we're able to get the information unless, you know, it's very difficult to get information from the jail of who did they release to team and who did they release on bail, which you have a constitutional right to bail.
If, if, if I may, I would just want to say, we, we have been advised that we are not subject to the open means of record to requests. But I would also say that the last thing that we would want to do is place a vulnerable person as a target within the community. So if there's somebody that may be released on a team bond, that should be released on a team bond, and that person's picture has become a target, that person could be harmed. Like, it's pretrial release. People are presumed innocent until proven guilty. And I just want to say that, that as we talk about public safety, please, let's consider public safety for every Oklahoma.
I would be curious to know who, who got out on bond on a sex crime. I'd be curious.
I'll get you the name.
We'd like, I think that's something that'd be helpful for us to know, if there really happened to somebody that got out.
Would you like to, drug trafficking also?
Trafficking, I'm not actually as concerned about it. It depends on, if, the, the statute on, on trafficking, especially if it relates to fentanyl, it's not particularly well calibrated, so you can have somebody that has a daily use possession on them, and they're shown trafficking. So you'd have to get deeper and deeper into understanding what was the substance that they were using to, to, to be pretty alarmed by. Most of the trafficking now on fentanyl is people that have daily use. It's, it's really more like simple possession. If you talk to the, you understand how fentanyl is used, it's, since it's meant to a substrate, it loosens, and so they have a higher quantity of it, and then, so it's not, my point would be, a lot of these traffickers are not really in this for profit. Everybody uses some, I'm sure, drugs, but these are not, I think, you know, 20 years ago, I should be prosecuted, you think about trafficking, these are people that are really involved in a commercial operation. And a lot of the trafficking I'm seeing now is really commercial use, and it's just the way it's calculated. So that, but the sex crime is, the lude acts with a child is something I, I would like to know about, but I don't, I think that would be excluded in how that would have played through. We, we want to scrutinize something like that.
I, you are probably the release since next.
All right, thank you.
And I will also just say, there have been several comments here today about efforts being made to clear out the jail. When I was looking at this pretrial release program sheet, I made a comment that almost 700 people were screened, and of those 700, only 100 recommendations were made. That's not even the ones signed off, that was only 100. And as we all know. And as we all know, sitting here, around a year and a half ago, the jail population was down to twelve hundred. As we sit here right now, it's around eighteen hundred. So if we're trying to clear out the jail, we are doing a very, very poor job of it, I will just say. But a lot of, and to Judge Stoner's point or to your point about the trafficking, a lot of individuals who cannot afford inpatient rehab, team has contracts to give them inpatient. So while they get a team bond, they are transported directly to inpatient rehab where they stay or soon enough time. Does anybody else have any comments or new business?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there you go.
It was a few dim, but it's a miracle.
And we come on for the Treatment Courts Advisory Board regular meeting agenda today, Thursday, September eleventh. Call this meeting to order first, we do roll call.
Judge Stoner?
Jim Anderson for Thomas Johnson.
Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Ben. And for Jeff. We'll notice that this meeting was properly posted on September tenth, two thousand twenty-five. First, we have discussion on possible action regarding the minutes. Is there motion to approve the minutes from July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five?
Motion to approve the minutes.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And then number two, discussion on possible action regarding the approval of a board to oversee the operation of treatment courts.
Yeah, this is something that we have discussed, I think, a couple of times on the thirty thousand foot level. I had heard from, a discussion has been had about there are members in the treatment court teams that are not excited about having an oversight board. And let me just explain what I'm talking about. And again, I had hoped before I let, to go to France, I would have an agreement for us all to look at. I don't want to move on this item until I have that available for everybody to look at and absorb and I didn't get it done. So ultimately, I'm going to ask and move that this get postponed, this agenda item gets postponed to another time when I have a chance to finish that agreement. But as I've said before, one of the things that I'm most concerned about right now, we have a very professional, I think, collegial group of professionals that are working and overseeing the treatment courts, that being the P V's office, the D A's office, Judge Stoner, the other judges that are involved in various diversion programs. And my fear, and what started this conversation with Bob Rabbits, what, three years ago now, was the fact that we wanted to make sure that if for some reason, five years from now, there is not the same professionalism and collegiality among the various groups that has to work together to make sure the diversion programs and the treatment courts work well, that we have some stability and structure in those programs. And so as I've said before, Mr. Rabbits and I started making, having discussions about how to set up, it's not just an advisory board. I'm talking about a board that is going to be involved in the operations of the diversion and treatment courts to make sure, if we want to add a treatment court, what that looks like and to make sure that it meets evidence-based programs. I mean, this is not a one-person program. This takes many people, it takes a village to pull this off. And so what I was most concerned about was making sure that there was sufficient structure, that these treatment courts and diversion courts last well into the future. I know I've said before that we've talked to Tulsa, Tulsa has their treatment courts under a division of the courts, that's what gives them stability, that's what gives them structure and oversight. And that's what we were trying to create here. But, you know, the open meetings requires that anybody that is meeting together, you know, we don't want to violate Open Meetings Act. And so with the original team was going to be the P V's office, the D A's office and the presiding judge that presented problems under the Open Meetings Act. Bridgette and I had conversations with Judge Ogden, what was that, about a month ago?
Yes.
About making this board now a five or possibly a seven-member board to do oversight. And again, that is, you know, oversight of expenditures, where we're going to go for grants, if grants ever open up. You know, just the kind of things that we need for this program to succeed well into the future. And so that's the overview, that's how it started. I really would move right now, after I've wasted everybody's time, and ask that this agenda item be moved to the next meeting so that I can get the agreement completed, get in your hands and give you a chance to review it.
So you mentioned refer to the December meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next on the agenda.
It's Tony here.
Yes.
Oh, we want to show, oh, you got more?
Yep.
Do you need one for those? No?
It's the same, I don't need half.
Okay, that.
So discussion on possible action regarding an outpatient. All right, so the item that we have in front of us is the drug court data. So we have active count currently and drug court of three hundred fifty-five individuals.
Sorry to interrupt you, Tony, so just getting where on number four, discussion on possible action regarding the drug court DUI court statistical report and.
Okay, perfect. So, all right, so everything I said, again, three hundred fifty-five individuals in the drug court program breaks down to seventy-eight point eight male and twenty-one point two female. Then you'll see the next part goes through the race, ethnicity. The next page will have the ins and outs for the months since, for July, August and September. Obviously, September is just through the date that the report was built, which was yesterday. So we have thirteen admissions in July, three graduates, zero revocations. And then in August, we had seventeen, eight, six. And then September, so far, we've had thirteen and four. The next part is applications. We've been making a lot of strides with the staff changeovers and we were ironing out a few bumps, but you can see we're consistent on applications received and what we've been getting approved and just working through those as September's just through yesterday's data. So that's what we're repeating on applications and that's just for the drug court. Next page will show our demographics for just applications in general and then the approval and denial. And it's as far as the unreported Hispanic, white, Caucasian, American Indian, Native American and Black African American. So that'll show that data that she hasn't asked for previously. And that covers the statistical data for drug court. So any questions on that?
The ins far exceed the outs.
Yes.
Eventually, that's going to topple the system over, is it not?
So there, so yeah, we're continually ticking in and not having individuals graduate, that will cause some headaches along the way. It'll either, one, limit the amount of people that we can provide in, which is what we're trying not to do. Recently, we met as a staff and are really focusing on what phase individuals are being in. We've got a renewed focus with the navigators. I would start from diversion hub at myself, meeting at least once a month to talk about what they're working on, the navigators, as far as helping the participants get through. We've got a new focus on some of the barriers that we have and why individuals are getting stuck in phases. So we have a five-phase program and we see individuals sometimes get stuck in a phase. So really looking and having the coordinators work with the individuals to say, okay, where it's at. And the focus that I've made with my team, which I supervise the coordinators, is not waiting till we realize that they're stuck in a phase, but not having it just all of a sudden be a surprise, but knowing ahead of time. So really getting into a proactive phase, that's what we're focusing on to keep more in regular tune with that. Some of the staff adjustments it's made, I wouldn't say upgrade, we just changed the positions around. And so I have more ability for an individual to actually reach out and say, hey, you've been in this phase for so long, what's going on in the mirror with the treatment? So we have some discussions and some plans going around to try to help work through that so that we don't get into that position.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right, any other questions on drug court? All right, then we have the same data for DUI court. We have ninety-four active participants. You can see the breakdown of gender and race on that first page there. And then our ins and outs on the next page, as well as application data. And you can see for the DUI court, we have a lot fewer applications than we do for the And then we've got demographic for the applications and then the approval and denial for the application.
I'm really, I'm stunned here, basically, we have like three graduations in a month and this, that just doesn't seem.
Drug court for DUI.
Well, you've got a drug court, like, you're down to three graduations for July.
So it's probably July fifth is our last month.
July twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
So it's like, this is kind of like five days in July?
Yeah, because the last meeting we had was up until July fourth.
Oh, I see, okay. In September, we're only, what, eleven days into September?
Nine.
Okay, so yeah, we're, okay, that's, okay, so it's not the whole month.
Yeah, so would you rather it be like, just no matter when we have?
Well, I mean, to me, if I was just looking at this, I'd like, wow, you got graduating people, eighty of the singles at low for August, but yeah, just, I don't really know how to propose to display it, but yeah, so in the last five days of July, we got three people, but for the whole month of July, we probably, I don't know, ten, twelve, fifteen, I don't know.
Would it be better to present the data by month? Just, I understand it would take a little longer to see it, but we get a better picture of.
Yeah, maybe just a trail.
Maybe just do it by month.
Yeah.
Maybe trailing by.
Yeah, then we could, we can make any footnotes we need for that, so. All right, any other questions on the drug court, DUI court data?
Nice grab.
So I want to make a grab. I need to receive the report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Three, five.
Want to go to five or number three?
Almost.
We don't have anything for number three. Discussion on possible action regarding the drug DUI court budget report.
Okay, so the budget report, since we had just July in there and we were working on getting our contract signed with O D M H, the only expenses that we had for drug court and DUI court is drug testing that we paid, supplies, so we didn't go build out a whole chart for just three line items. So we've got plenty of money in the bank, we're waiting for O D M H to give us our final contract. We got a three-monthed contract extension for July, August and September. They've been reaching out as far as getting data, so we're hopefully to have our final contract from O D M H for the treatment courts any day now for, to continue on for the rest of the year. So we didn't build out a whole budget detail since there was only like about four expenses that we have. Trying to save you all time. All right, you ready for dreams court?
Yes, discussion on possible action regarding dreams court.
This one's, the front page looks very similar, but it's a different report. All right, in the same blue, the last one, currently we have three hundred and thirty-five active participants in dream court. You can see by gender and race, ethnicity on the bottom page there. Our ins and outs will be on the next page. And then our application, you can see there down at the bottom, what we're looking at on those. And just a note on the applications for this, some of the individuals, there's best practice standards of like who should be getting into the program as far as a mental health, like diagnosis, and then you have also like their risk factor and their substance use. And so some of these that we have on here just don't meet one of those criteria, so that's why they are, you see that being a little bit higher number, is they just don't match the best practices. And then whenever we look at, or whenever Jeff and his team are looking at those applications, they're noting that, so we're letting whoever the attorney is for the individual be aware of the denial. And then the last page is the application demographics.
What hurdles are you seeing due to O D M H and kind of the freeze and everything that's happening with the contracts? What of those are you seeing that have on the programs?
So the O D M H, where they're at, one of the consequence that we have just in general is that everybody that gets applied to the program for treatment courts has what's called an offender screening. So this has just been an ongoing, and I don't believe this is a funding source, but just the amount of screeners that we have available and the slots that they're available to do. So like for next week, they can do four screenings on Monday, eight, eight and then four, so throughout the week. So that limits the amount of screens that we can do for in custody individuals. So the in custody is want to go get screened so that they can get out, so that they can do that, so they're constantly asking their attorneys, when can I get screened, when can I get screened? So we have to prioritize by the date that they apply to get them into. Now, flip side, the individuals that are out of custody, we struggle getting them to go get screened because they're out of custody. So we have a full-time screener that's over there. So we've talked about, Madison and me have talked about, working with North Care to maybe pull the out-of-custody screener over to help to get some, get some more screenings going, maybe one day a week that maybe they can do, you know, twelve or, you know, even a couple of days a week to kind of get the in custody's down some so that we can move through some of the applications. As far as a funding source, the obstacles that we're seeing is that, one, their contract hasn't been filed once, so we have to be very cautious on what money we're spending. And then whenever seven eighty-one, we still don't have the information for seven eighty-one from Department of Mental Health as far as what the budget's going to look like for next year. So right now, what we currently have is that we know what was budgeted and what was approved for last year, but since we don't have next year, a lot of the direct services that we would provide an individual, like housing assistance, we're not able to spend that money because if we see a decrease in the contract, we'll have to make adjustments. So there's some fixed costs that we have, like diversion hub, salaries for a district attorney, for a public defender, salaries for the contract with team, for the supervision engagement officers. So we're really staying with the fixed cost. One of the fixed costs, or one of the variable costs that we are spending just because it's a need is we spend money on transportation. So that's the buzz passes for individuals and also for transportation, where we have a company that takes individuals to treatment. We've seen a spike in, you know, how, or it feels like a spike as far as how many treatment individuals that we're sending to inpatient treatment. And I think that it's just kind of ebb and flows with the times. I've been here for about a year and a half, so I kind of see it spike a little bit about this time and then it will drop back down as far as the individuals, but we're helping them get the treatment that they need and part of the program. So we've seen that. So some of the costs that we're not really spending are some of the incentive costs like, like there's various items for the participants. The good news is that we spent the money last year. So what that allowed us to do is that we have some of these resources that we're talking about, is that we have incentives that we had bought last year that we still have in inventory, so we're able to still keep the best practice standards of recognizing the individuals if through like very. that we still have in inventory, so we're able to still keep the best practice standards of recognizing the individuals if through like various items as well as the verbal phrase, the certificates, and various items like that. But the biggest issue is just not having that seven-eight-one, not knowing how we're going to budget. And so originally, the data told me that we would have it at the end of August and it was like beginning of September. And the application, they told me was going to be due by the end of October. Well, that means we won't even know what our budget really is probably till November and December, so we're already halfway through a year. So it really kind of puts it hard to, to budget out correctly and spend the money in an even portion. We're either feast or famine, like with that, so. So that's a little bit of the obstacles we're running with the finances. And the finance for the, for the Dreams Court, the only expense we had out of the Dreams Court account was for just drug testing. So there is just one line item out of that, so.
Bridge, if I could build on Tony's comment here, I just got out of media, okay, right here from a meeting with one of our treatment providers that have, you know, residential treatment facilities. And one of the things that I think we're going to be okay from our side, but a lot of our partners that we partner with are having significant impacts. So for example, I just got out of a meeting where we send people to residential treatment and they're telling us they have to have insurance to show up. We, you know, right now they have over a million dollars last year, they provided service for the DMH never reimbursing for. And so DMH is telling them we're not reimbursing for a lot of different things. So right now, other normal treatment beds, they'd always have five for people who were completely indigent. Now they're just saying, if you're, if you're, if we're going to send somebody to them, we've got to have them sign up for Sooner Care or some other insurance for you to get inpatient treatment. And that was the first one to tell us that, basically, we think it's going to kind of fall in line with other facilities that we utilize. So we've, we've got a plan in place, so I think the biggest impact from the budget cuts at DMH is really going to get our partners more than it will us. I mean, I'm cautiously optimistic that our money's going to come through, but a lot of the people that we partner with, agencies, they are, they got a lot of cuts.
But just, doesn't that hurt the program ultimately? Because we can't get the assessment done, so we can't get them into programs. And then if we get them into programs, then we need to get them to get away. So we're living facility, they're not getting paid, or we don't have providers to provide mental health treatment for the people in mental health.
That's correct.
I mean, it's all going to crumble anyway.
It's, it's, it's a, right now, our, I think we're good internally, but you know, a lot of our partners that we partner with, that will end up rippling back on us. So the dominoes fall, but I mean, we're, we're, we're trying to be proactive here and thinking about how it is we can maneuver around that. And so, but it's going to be, we're going to, we are going to kind of go through a period of some austerity here, I think, as far as leave access to services outside of what we can provide.
But, but the money has been appropriated, correct?
Well, I don't know.
Seven-eight-one money.
Well, for seven-eight-one money, yes, yeah, I think we'll be okay on that. But I'm, what I'm worried about is we partner a lot with North Care, Catalyst Hope, and they are, you know, hard, they all are, are getting hit really hard. And so their ability to support some of the programs and the participants, we, we expect a decline, we got to have it. So we'll just, just like, you know, right now, I do think we're going to be, go to our funding for our program. But I do think these budget cuts are going to affect our program because a lot of people we partner with are, are, they're cutting way back.
I was looking at the application data, it looks like you had around thirty in July applications and then four would equal for Dreams Court. And we had four go in, and I think a large part of that was that they had shut down pleas due to North Care, Red Rock inability of people to take participants. And so we're looking at thirty applications and only four people. I think that was in large part due to that, so that's my concern is.
Yeah, we see that, like, I would say, like, it seems like it's just a cycle. Every three to four months, one of our providers will say, hey, due to staffing or vacations or whatever, we've got to hold off on taking new pleas for it. So like if you only have, like in Dreams Court, we have three providers. So with that, one shuts down, that means the other two have to take more or you try to get to it. Okay, your plea date's going to be out a little while, but then in turn means that the jail's population could possibly stay up because a lot of these individuals are incarcerated, so are in, in custody. And so, yeah, so we have that, and it's the same thing with like, you know, we've, we've looked for other providers, but right now, ODMH is not signing up other providers because they're just in that holding pattern where they're at. So, yeah, so that does create another, another issue. And I think the, the insurance piece is that, you know, it has us looking at it a little bit differently. You know, it's just like, one of the things that we try to do early on is that really look and see, okay, does the person, does the individual who's pleading in, do they have insurance? And who on our team is taking that to say, let's get you signed up so that if they need to, with a provider that they can long-term have? We're not talking about, you know, going out on marketplace and getting them something. We're talking about like, are they signing up? Do they qualify for the, you know, Medicaid or Sooner Care or whatever? So we put a big focus back on that whenever we talk about the, just knowing that this is going to, you know, possibly come down.
How long typically does that take to get someone signed up for that, if they're in custody?
If they're in custody, sign up for insurance?
Yes.
I'm not sure you can sign up if you're in custody, depending on who the, and so once they get out, we can usually sign them up. And then actually, they can get processed usually pretty quick, like in the next day or so, they'll know that they've got it. It's just keeping them updating, that's where we lose a lot of people is we get them signed up. Especially in Dreams Court, we get them signed up and then at that point, they get mailers that, hey, you need to do this or that. Just don't follow through and they're not telling us. So really having that focused thought, hey, once we sign up and doing the follow-up check, the proactivity rather than, oh, we thought they had it and now we're trying to use it, and how you did in response to this letter, and they needed your signature, and they needed updated information. So, so that's part of our, our plan as well.
Okay, that was my concern is someone in custody, obviously, they get out, then we have to scramble to get them insurance, get them a provider.
Yeah, now that, right now, currently, we get, because there are beds available at certain places where we can screen them while they're in custody for treatment. And they can go straight from in custody to an inpatient bed. So that could limit, so that could be a gap in there that we, we start to see. But if we get a lot of the individuals that are out of custody, if we have a real rigid, like this person has got insurance and that we checked and we've made sure it's still active, especially we start to see signs of they're clearing, clearing off and just saying, hey, let's check this and just do a checkup with you and follow up, then that would allow those other beds, because they could use their insurance. That would allow the, the indigent beds possibly to not be free taken up by individuals that could have insurance.
Any more questions? Uh, number seven, discussion impossible action regarding the Dreams Court.
That's the same thing, the only item on there was the drug testing stuff.
Uh, number eight, discussion impossible.
What, what, what does that mean? The only other item was the drug testing?
That was where I talked about earlier, for the Dreams Court, the only expense that we have to the Dreams Court was drug testing. So we had no other line items out of that account, so.
Uh, sorry.
Oh, you're good.
Number eight, discussion impossible action regarding veterans treatment court.
Oh, I have another question, forget it.
Yeah. So program report for veterans treatment court for the previous period, we have forty-nine participants that are put into our program. Of those, forty-three are active. The remainder are two six-month DOC sanctions, one is in federal custody, I have state, three are AWOL. Since last report, we have had two unsuccessful, uh, program participants as well. And then testing is definitely low to forty-three active.
How many could the program take?
Seventy-five is what we've discussed. And we certainly want to get there. I think that with the streamlining of our application process here recently, our numbers will continue to grow. Because it's just, it's turning out so much quicker.
That was going to be my question, as soon as we get the number.
Yep.
A six-month DOC sanction, two of them are on, what is that?
So they go to I R F, which is an intermediate rehabilitation facility. Both of those participants, so we don't allow tampering with their drug tests.
That's your what?
We don't allow tampering with our drug testing program, so that's the reason that they're there.
So it's a sanction.
It's a sanction.
It's a sanction, so.
So they've done something naughty.
Yeah, okay. They're slapping their hands, but it's the next time it happens, they're taking their hand off, right?
So it's, it's usually the sanction of last resort, you know, we've tried a lot of things, they're not compliant, or it's something very, very serious like trying smuggling, urine to the lab or something like that. It's a pretty heavy, it's the heaviest sanction you've got to go through six months. But Bill Johnson, where they have RID, so it's a very structured program, come back and they get, it reminds them what's on the other side. They're not, well, can't figure it out.
Bridget, did you get that, club?
Thank you, man, I should have been listening.
I'm going to give the applications.
Hold on, wait. Can I get some coverage on it?
All right, next is the application data. Thanks to Colin for the help with the graph here, you'll notice it looks very similar to our previous one. We've had ten total applicants in the previous period, six approved, six denied. On the next page, it will walk you through the demographics of those. On the page after, it will run you through the demographics of the approved.
What are reasons why most are getting denied?
Um, so of the denials, reasoning's are five before danger to others, and then the other one, we didn't have jurisdiction.
What does that mean, no jurisdiction?
Uh, so they had a out-of-state case and they were trying to get transferred here.
Oh, okay, okay.
Then you'll see the denial didn't grab this flow there. Questions?
I think that's admirable that you've got people wanting to transfer into yours.
Please accept the report.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And then discussion on possible action regarding the E T C budget report.
Yes, so at the previous meeting, it was related to me that yes, one kind of update of what we were at in our, our dispersion of funds in bringing year two. So this is that. Each category is listed here, how much is allocated, how much we disperse, and what we have remaining. I believe Mr. Grant last time had reported that we are under budget on a couple of categories, so we're talking about how we're going to reallocate those funds. But we want to do it in a smart way to where, you know, obviously, we have some of our, like, travel expenses, fringe benefits. The sub-recipient is really the one that we have the most remaining, and that's just due to whenever we wrote the grant, we had different people in those positions. You know what I mean? And since we've had a little bit of turnover, salaries have changed, so on and so forth. So the other thing I'd like to point out here is the procurement contract is a independent evaluation. Just completed the onsite portion of earlier in August. We're awaiting that report, and once we get that report, that forty thousand will be dispersed.
Is this, is this budget on a fiscal year basis or what's it on?
It is on fiscal year basis. It's always on the thirtieth of this month. Year two will.
Okay, so the third, so it's on the, the, it's on the federal fiscal year, not the state fiscal year. Okay.
And Colin, can you explain the forty thousand for the procurement contract?
Yes, so as part of the grant, one of the milestones that we had listed is we wanted to get independent evaluation of our program. So we contracted with the N P C Research. They reviewed all of our documentation that we have in our program processes. Then they came for the onsite portion, mid-August, did in-person interviews, some, some via Zoom, but most of them in-person interviews with the staff. And that was pretty much it, just awaiting the report now.
But, but it, it was a budget item in the, in the grant.
Yes.
It never required by the grant.
Yes, and that was a, one of the areas that they had previously, or not previously, but the year the grant was submitted that they were focusing on, or they had identified as a priority area, so we made sure to include it.
So when will the disbursement be made?
Uh, whenever we receive the report.
And that should be anticipated?
Well, uh, it was going to be before the end of the month, but they, or they requested an extension for a little bit longer, so.
So it's going to throw, it's going to throw it into the next fiscal year.
Yes, sir. Hopefully, they're able to spin it out and it won't be a problem, but I think they're just kind of being cautious and asking for the extension, so. Questions? Please accept the report.
All in favor?
Aye.
And discussion on possible action regarding the dates and times, the two thousand twenty-six really regularly scheduled meetings is everyone opposed?
Move approval.
All in favor? All opposed? Any citizen participation? Any board's comment?
I have one comment. I personally just want to appreciate this board, I just, over the Labor Day, I went over, I was in Washington, D.C. at a giant recovery conference. And, you know, I just, I kind of reflect on what we do here, you know, Oklahoma County, whenever you hear about Oklahoma County criminal justice, people think about the jail, and that's usually not good news, you know, but I want to say on a, we're doing really well in terms of we, we are, we are, our treatment court programs here in Oklahoma County are nationally recognized. We, in fact, we were a finalist before being a mentor court, and we just have a really strong showing. And it's really refreshing to go to, go to like a national conference in Oklahoma County being recognized. It's just, and just having outstanding treatment courts, outstanding diversion programs, and really kind of being a leader in some ways of, you know, kind of a model. So I just want to thank this whole board for that, and the team members here, and the Tony, because it's all, I mean, this, this is just a meeting. We get kind of caught up in, we don't necessarily realize the, the broad impact of what we're doing here. You know, even though you might have eight people graduating, that's, you know, that's saving the state of Oklahoma, half a million dollars in incarceration costs. And so I just think we're, just want to thank this whole board for your leadership and support and what we're doing.
Any new business?
No, no. We got to put a time on the clock.
So I have the same story in back of my chest, sort of said, and I think it's really interesting how it closed out the meeting from what we heard earlier. We had a participant that I initially denied, and I had trafficking cases, he had two trafficking cases. And we, we did a lot of work on it, and I talked to the line ADA, Mr. Helms on the case, and the public defender, Ms. Love, did a lot of work on it. And we ended up determining that one of the cases was misdemeanor, and the other case was without question, personal use. So when you hear trafficking, it gets spun out as drug trafficking, it's not the same thing as Ozark, it's not the same thing with federal law, it's weight, ultimately. And so it can be sales and it can be usage. However, in this case, this is why I'm telling the story, individual applied to the drug court, I think yesterday, and then went up to the trial docket to find his public defender and the ADA, who just so happened to be trying a really bad case together, to thank them both for putting them in the program. And neither of the, Ms. Love, the PD knew who he was, ADA didn't know who he was, thought he was sitting with, there for the trial. So I just think that's the sort of thing you're kind of, this means so much to the people who are participating in the program. I thought it was particularly, I don't know, you made me think of this in a certain way, I told him this, that he came up to find both people to thank him for putting in and hopefully to congratulate, so there you go.
Yeah, so and Judge, starting to your point, I mean, you've said many times that every person comes to sobriety on their own journey. Some are ready for it, some are wrong. And the ones that aren't ready for it, right, I mean, they get a plea in and if they don't successfully complete the programs, then they do their time in DOC. And, and just so that everybody knows, I mean, I think you're aware of it, Bridget, and I know Madison knows. And what we're doing now is sometimes we have offenses that are, are serious and maybe we're questioning whether or not they should do a treatment court or diversion court on the front end. So what we're doing is, is suggesting some DOC time first, whether it's, you know, five years or six years, whatever it is. And then they come back and do a treatment program on the back end, because one of the things that we know is that you don't dry up in prison, and you can get any drug you want in prison. And so a lot of people do their time, they never address their addiction, they come back out and they do, they commit crimes, they go back to what they're used to. So we are doing treatment court and diversion programs on the back end after they've done their DOC time. Hopefully, at that point, they're ready to accept a change in, in, in sobriety. So we're using all sorts of things to try to help get people stabilized.
We're also seeing a ton of trafficking charges that are coming in as trafficking fentanyl, coming back when the field test, it's a field test, and then it comes through sixty days after they've been sitting in county, and it's a misdemeanor, personal use, and they're using. So we've been seeing a lot of those when trafficking charges was directed, maybe that. when trafficking charges, Mr. Rep, maybe they get back, so.
And then Mr. Steele and I will be hosting the Shyne Annual Thanksgiving Dinner on November twelfth, which is a fun occasion, turkey and dressing, at the county building there next to the election board at five thirty, I think.
On the twelfth?
Uh-huh. Same day.
Got it.
That one you do. Now may I move to turn?
Yes, you may.
Hold on, would you give me a second?
Check it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I like Thanksgiving.